It is 7:00 PM and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Will you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me?
Here, next to him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, Cheryl. Will you take roll call?
President.
President.
Here.
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 Thank you. All right, I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Mary, move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
I had a motion by Councilwoman Couch and seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now the consent agenda, items 1 through 6. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 6.
Second.
So I had a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie, seconded by Councilwoman Couch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we are going to do an introduction, a special guest, and presentation. First on the agenda is the Cedro Woolly Downtown Association. Good evening, Ian. How are you?
Is the mic turned on?
Ian, there's a blue light. There you go.
So this is kind of just an outline. I'll skip that. There is, if you guys have this up here, there is a shared drive. So there are a whole bunch of different files that we share within the organization. Our budget's on there. All of our committee meeting notes are on there. If you just follow this link, anybody can do it. It'll take you right to our shared drive and you can see this presentation. You can see everything that we're doing today. So here's the organization that we have right now. Rebecca Larson is the president, then we have Paula. Brenda's on there, Michael MacGyver, Chad Poulsen, Amy Damian, Danny, and Jean McLennan. There's also a couple of open spots there that we're trying to fill this year in 2019. Please stop me if you guys want to go. I'm going to go real fast because there's a lot of slides. Here's our mission statement for 2019, well, forever, is to revitalize Cedro Woolly historic downtown. Our vision statement is to enhance our historic downtown identity by fostering innovation and a healthy community to ensure economic vitality. And I underlined innovation because I think our whole organization is behind that term, that innovation, to try and find something new here for Cedro Woolly. And because we are a mainstream-focused, or a Main Street-focused organization, we broke that down into the four main committees for the Main Street, and that's the Promotional Committee, the Design Committee, Economic Vitality, and then Organization, which we're going to go through in more detail here in a few minutes. I also put a little blurb on here about where we're at financially. It's not a whole bunch to say, but I wanted to make sure that you guys had all that. So our balance and what we did for last year, our approved budget for this year, projected revenue. Again, all this stuff, if you guys, is all up on our shared drive that anybody can see and has access to. So we have this, also on the shared drive, this large Excel document that is our work plan. And each one of these boxes, 12 months. So we're in January. You see the green. So this is the Main Street. Our number-one focus right now is the Main Street application. And we've determined June 1, we can most likely apply to the Washington Main Street organization. So we've got a few more things to work on. We're still waiting from the IRS to give us our determination letter, which could be a few minutes, or could be a while, I guess. We're still waiting on, planning a few things. We still have to put together the next three years' projected budget. We still need to have more photographs of more activities. We need a letter from our governing body, a few other resources like that. But the majority of the hard work is already done. So I also wanted to give you guys a little idea of where we're at with the tax credit because when I came in here a year ago, that was one of the big things, is to how can we start getting those tax dollars back into the downtown? So if we apply by June 1, we're expecting 30, 60 days to process that application. So if by August 1, we are a Main Street organization, we'll immediately be able to go after organizations, companies, that might be able to contribute to the downtown and get tax credits. So how that works is in January of 2020, or actually Q1 2020, if we're a Main Street organization, there's $90,000 in tax benefits that are earmarked for Cedro Woolly downtown. In order to get those, we need to go to these organizations within that time period in 2019, this year, and get them to contribute to the Downtown Association. Willing to walk any of you guys through that is a lot of timing, and there's quite a few more steps in there that we haven't worked out because we're still trying to get through the application process.
I have a question. Sorry to interrupt.
No.
If not by August 1, do you have to wait till the following year?
No.
Okay.
The deadline's actually October. But the deadline is November 15 for an organization to contribute in order to get the benefit in 2020. So our push right now is to, if we can get to be a Main Street accredited organization in this year, we can start getting dollars that will mean something to our contributors the next year. So for example, your dog grooming business pays $10,000 a year in BNO taxes. We can give you a credit for that next year if you pay this year. So we're trying to rally to get accredited this year.
Thanks.
Yeah. More of our work plan. It's a long document. We've got our events listed out here, who our committees are. This actual document is part of the Main Street application, so it's pretty detailed. We've got historic designation, project, our marketing, all of our volunteers, fundraising. We've got a data-driven downtown project, large membership project, among other things. Again, this is all on the shared drive, so you guys can go up there and look at that at any time and see what we talked about at the last committee, what progress we're making, stuff like that. Any questions so far? So we have a pretty awesome membership program, I think. Anybody can get involved with it. We have a community supporter program. If you go to this website right now, downtowncedrowoolie.com/memberships, you can start. Five bucks a month. Goes directly to the Downtown Association to help pay for other things. We've got, I think, 15 contributors right now, so we're up to about $400 a month in... Not $400 a month. So far, last year, $400 a month, I think, or $400, I think we're up to about $250 a month in revenue from memberships. Marketing Partners, we have another membership program. I invite all of you guys to check out all of our membership opportunities on our website, downtowncedrowoolie.com.
So Ian, I have a question.
Yeah.
So I actually have one of these. It's the Downtown Association. It's a sheet that you...
Did you went to the event?
I did. I did go to the event, and it was fun.
Great.
So on here is actually the website to sign up. But I see that you also have... Does this still stand? It's a lifetime membership of $20?
It's for the students.
Okay.
The students at Cedro Woolly High School have come up with a student membership program.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, so it's $20 for a lifetime. And I can help, if anybody has any students, I can help you hook up with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So here's another project. Speaking of the students, thank you. So over the last three or four months, we've been working with the Cedro Woolly High School, CTE marketing team, and they have done several projects with us. And one is to help us populate this new site that I've been working on called Woolly Life. And it's... My background before I came into the restaurant industry is marketing and search engine optimization and a lot of web development-type stuff. So we're building this to really attract the tourism and people looking for Cedro Woolly. So I wanted to highlight this little... So this vacation rentals, one of the things, when I've been doing research on the Main Street programs, everybody's got these places to stay where there's hotels and, you know, something to really brag about. Well, we don't have any of that. So this vacation rentals button right here, the students have done a great job doing a bunch of research, finding Airbnbs, Homeaways. And so now we have a catalog of places to stay in Cedro Woolly that aren't hotels. So it's a great resource for people coming into town. And this is their logo. Speaking of which, congratulations to your group. They raised, I think, $10,000 this last weekend for Project Hometown and the Skagit Habitat for Humanity. So great group of students. So last time we talked, we talked about maybe putting a park in here. And where Video Store came down, we talked about putting a park in here, but we just couldn't figure out a way to financially make it work for temporary. And we didn't feel good about spending money on stuff that wasn't going to last for a few years and whatnot. So we kind of came up with some new ideas. And at the same time, Leadership Skagit approached us in wanting to know what they could do to help. So what we're doing is really exciting. With Leadership Skagit and Spaney Buildings, who owns the property, they are looking to put together... This is actually at the entrance to Cap Santi Marina in Anacortes. And they have these little kiosks here. Right now, there's a Dog Side Dogs. I met this guy. He's really ambitious. But they've had jewelry, t-shirt, other kind of businesses in here. And right now, Leadership Skagit and Spaney, they're working on it. And John, they're going to work on some solutions to put together something like this in Downtown Cedro Woolly. With inclusion to the CTE and the business classes, the schools, stuff like that. So really exciting. It's right at the cusp. We just are talking, going back and forth with the emails, and haven't even discussed it with the planning. But that's what they want to do, and the owners are all about it. They're very excited about it. So hopefully, within the next couple of months, that might happen. Another thing we're doing in April, towards the end of April, we're working on creating a carnival, kind of a fun carnival downtown Cedro Woolly, where we can capitalize a little on the Wood Fest, Tula Festival traffic. We feel like towards the end of April, there's a lot of missed opportunity there. There's maybe some of the tulips have been clipped. There's not a lot of places for kids to hang out in that side of town. So we're going to build something here for them to come here. Also, in conjunction with the Arts Council, we are working on these banners here. Right now, there's nothing going on in downtown. So our board has already approved to create some improved banners, both quality, and try to get... We've kind of gone back to them in looking for some better, more designs that kind of pop a little bit. So they're working on it. And I think, according to what we're talking about today... And then the final thing that we're working on towards the beginning of August is Woolly Western Days. And this is just, and there's not even a graphic to describe this yet, but it's something that we're all really excited about and create that kind of look and feel of the old days downtown Cedro Woolly. So we've got some great ideas and even have a bunch of people willing to help. That's what I have for you guys. So I want to answer any questions that you might have.
It's fantastic. I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
This is very exciting.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Carl, any questions?
Thank you, Ian. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, great. Okay, and so Cory Ann, going to talk about the arts. Ian just mentioned it. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to give you an update as to what the Arts Council has been up to. We've been gratefully working with Ian to revitalize the banner project. The Downtown Association agreed to help us with getting the 36 banners downtown redone with better quality. And we're making slight adjustments to make them more aesthetically pleasing and more cohesive. And then the Arts Council will be... I'd like to... I don't know if I'll have to figure out how to ask the City Council approval to get the eight... Nathan said he has the hardware to get eight banners at the roundabouts. So then I would like to try to draw traffic into downtown. And so maybe we might look at what that looks like. So maybe we can... I'll meet with him separately about that. Also, we worked with the Downtown Association to get a website up to do the wood sculpture restoration around town. So that's on the Downtown Association website also. So if someone would like to help repair some of the wood sculptures, you could donate to a specific statue.
Do you have that set up already?
Yeah, well, we took pictures and we have all the information. It's on the Downtown Association website.
Okay.
I worked with Damian Vines on that. Also, I wanted to announce that Chris Routh and Bueller with the Rotary has agreed for, during the Summer Concert Series, we're also going to be doing Art in the Park for five Sundays this summer. So we're planning in a pretty amazing summer this year. And then we're going to be having our Third Annual Art in the Park and Community Talent Show at Riverfront Park on August 27, 2019. And... Oh, I also have some artists with suggestions for art at the roundabouts. Things that are low-lying, like salmon jumping through the rocks. And so I'm working on that and making sure that everything's compliant with WDOT. And also, we have our next... Oh, I have some submissions for some new murals. And so I'd like to work with the city to find out what walls we could possibly revitalize and keeping it cohesive with maintaining the historic downtown feel. And also looking at some more modern art projects at the skate park and maybe at some trailheads. We also have a meeting. I don't have much to report because I've... We have a meeting this, on Tuesday, February 12, from 6 to 8 at the Woolly Market. So if anyone would like to have put in some input or help be involved, please let me know. And I have my email address and a flyer at the back on the table. So if anybody's interested, please pick up a flyer. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Cory?
Cory Ann, what time is your meeting on the 12th?
Six to 8.
You have great vision. I like, especially, I'm especially excited about the roundabouts.
Yeah.
Because they really do need some life, some color, something exciting there.
Yes.
So thank you. Thank you for your time and energy.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you.
And then Mr. John Sternlicht, from E-Ask. Hello, John.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting me. I always like to come and talk to you and talk about what we're doing and kind of how it ties into the whole big picture. So I talk about economic development. We have to be a little bit schizophrenic because we look at the entire county. And then we look at each component, each city, each town, each port. The unincorporated county is an individual entity because we have to look at what each one of those wants to do and wants to be, even while we're looking at what the whole county needs and what kind of approach we take in connection with the outside world. So it's pretty entertaining to function on all those levels. I had sent this to Aaron, so he can send this around to you because I think some of this might be just a good reference to... I pulled some definitions in the beginning just to kind of make sure we're all speaking the same language about economic development. "The intentional practice of improving a community's economic well-being and quality of life." So the way we look at it isn't only about jobs and isn't only about capital investment, but it's about what does it take for the entire community, in this case, the entire county, to be prosperous, healthy, to have everybody sharing in opportunities and the ability to raise their standard of living. So it's lots of activities in a broad range, not only to attract jobs and help create jobs, but to have a good tax base for all the different municipalities and the ports so they can create amenities, like we're talking about, and do the things that make it the kind of community where people want to live and work because that's really the bottom line. Kind of gone are the days when you just went where the job was regardless of what kind of place it was. Because now, I certainly see it with my own kids. They go live where they want to go live, and then the rest will figure itself out. But they want to be in a livable community with the quality of life that they want to have. And while we here in Skagit County may not be able to attract the 22- to 25-year-olds who want to live in Seattle with a 24-hour nightlife, let's check back with them in about 10 years because I bet we'll be able to. If they want to buy a house, if they want to have a family, if they want to have a better pace of life. So that's kind of what economic development is too, is focusing on the assets we have and finding people who value those assets. So the other thing that is in bold there is something I talk about a lot. It's important to have not only a citywide, but a countywide and a regional perspective because what happens in a neighboring city or even in a neighboring county can very well help us. The good folks in Watcomb County were very excited about Lovley, which happened in Anacortes. They said, yes, we'd have loved to have had it. But it's great for us because we'll have people who live here and work there, and we'll have companies who can do business with them. And that's even more so. I mean, how many people who live in Cedro Woolly work at Dakota Creek? And how many people who don't live in Burlington shop in Burlington? So we're all very interrelated. So what helps a company in one part of the area is going to benefit all of us. So that, and I'll let you look at that a little more closely on your own. But that's our work plan. We have a pretty traditional, basic economic development work plan, business attraction, business retention and expansion, and capacity building. So attraction is mainly about looking to have companies that aren't here coming operate here. It's about entrepreneurship too. The business advising that we do fits in with that. And part of economic development now is attracting individuals, not just companies. Individual workers, professionals, sole practitioners, whatever that might be. Retention and expansion might involve turnover of ownership of businesses because we're seeing a lot of that, where generationally, people are deciding they don't want to run their own business anymore. Their kids may not be interested. So we match up folks who might be good to keep that business running and growing and keep it here. We have... Well, I'll get to that in a minute. The capacity building, we talked about Leadership Skagit earlier. That's a program of E-Ask. And that is something that builds the capacity of our community. We need folks who can serve as volunteer leaders, such as city council members and mayors and other private organizations. They don't survive, and economic development doesn't survive without those volunteer, talented supporters. So Leadership Skagit, the Latino Leadership Institute, which is for mainly community college students in our region. We're involved with the Women's Funding Alliance. We're helping sponsor the We Ignite Washington program, February 8, as well as the Skagit Ag Summit, February 8. And I'll apologize now, and I'll get to this again later. We moved the Economic Forecast Night to a Wednesday. Previously, it had been Thursday, which precluded Burlington. Now we're precluding Cedro Woolly and Mount Vernon. So I think next year will be Tuesday, and we'll see who we can get then. I know Anacortes is Monday, so it's possible that's nobody. So maybe we'll just stay on Tuesday from there on out. In capacity... I'm sorry?
For the dinner, John?
Yes. Yeah. It's Wednesday, February 6, at Swenamish. I'll repeat that later, but you have a meeting. I'm not getting in the middle of that. A lot of what we have to work on is workforce because that's the biggest challenge that we hear from all the companies we deal with, is it's hard to find people, and it's hard to find people who are trained to do what we need them to do. So we're very closely with the college, with K-12. We've been involved with Skagit STEM since it was Cedro Woolly STEM. And those things are all really important, early learning in terms of the... Thinking of it as a pipeline of qualified workers. You have to start from way, way back. So economic development, community development, all sort of tied in one. It used to be called industrial development. But now manufacturing, which we refer to as industry, there's so much more in the service economy that that term seems old. Product development, we help businesses with finding better ways to market their products as part of our business advising. Business development, similarly, how can we help our businesses be more successful? Help them get into export, help them find different ways of financing, find business partners and investors, those sorts of things. Retail and tourism development, we'll work with communities on whatever it is they decide they want to do, whether it's downtown Cedro Woolly, downtown Mount Vernon. Imagine Concrete, we've, you know, been involved in a lot of those programs because everyone wants something different for their community. And then all of that needs to be sustainable. We need to be careful about our natural resources to make sure that they're still going to be around even while this economic progress is going on. So business attraction, we have about 40 companies in our pipeline. These are generally confidential projects that either we get directly or they come from the Department of Commerce. Those are the two major sources. These are all customer-driven. And by that, I mean that whoever the company is who's looking says, here's what we need. We need a site that's, you know, within five miles of the interstate, and it's 50 acres, and we need a 100,000-square-foot building, or, you know, whatever all those things are. Here's our electricity usage. And we put all that in a matrix, and we find all the sites in Skagit County that might possibly fit. And we propose those for that project. So anywhere we can find a site in Cedro Woolly that fits, that is proposed. So every opportunity we get in, we send around to all the cities and towns and counties. Whether, even if we already know they don't have anything that's going to fit, we want to make sure that all those contact people know what's going on. There we go. So we also do a lot of proactive marketing of sites. And one of the things that is most attractive, particularly about Cedro Woolly, is the Swift Center. And that, I think, for the right customers, will be an amazing draw for some sort of research and development and commercialization technology by virtue of what's nearby. So we're waiting and looking for the right folks for that. And we do a lot of joint... And we do a lot jointly with our neighbors, with Watcomb Island and San Juan particularly, because when we're marketing to the outside world, you know, nobody knows where our county boundaries are and they really don't care. They just want to know what's nearby, so if Western is nearby or WSU Everett or Bellingham Airport or Payne Field, that's something we can brag about and we do, we and our neighbors all support one another in that. Some of the obstacles to new locations, we do have not a lot of available industrial land. We have even fewer industrial properties that are already prepared with infrastructure, with the building already built. Because, you know, companies like the path of least resistance, so if they can find something that's already ready to move in, as you can imagine, they want that. Second choice would be, okay, either I'll upfit something that's already there and I'll change it to fit my purposes or I'll build. So those are all, again, judged by the company and they get to decide. We don't have a lot of sites here in Skagit County for really large projects. And I think that probably works out just fine, because in terms of sustainability, I don't really see us getting a Toyota manufacturing facility with 5,000 jobs and, you know, a couple of billion dollars of investment and plunking that down in the middle of Skagit County. That just doesn't make a lot of sense to me or probably anybody else, probably including Toyota. So that all works out fine, I think. We are looking for companies that fit our size and that sustainability way and also fit our target industry, so advanced manufacturing, maritime, ag and ag-related, clean tech. And clean tech can really fit into any kind of industry at all. It's just whoever had, the refineries have some clean tech practices. So our latest announcements, Lovely, Breep Precision Tooling and Garden Path Fermentation. So we also help folks who are trying to either start or take over businesses get through all the obstacles that they might encounter. And, you know, that kind of makes us the cheerleaders for economic development. I was telling the mayor earlier, with your legislative agenda, please tell us what it is and we will support that to, you know, whomever we can find who is involved in that whole process, because that's what's going to make Cedro Wully stronger and that will make all the rest of us stronger too. By my best count, we've had about eight projects over the last couple of years that we've submitted sites in Cedro Wully, four. There are a couple that are still warm to hot, so we'll see what happens with those. And we're doing that all the time. We're promoting the entire county all the time to our trade missions and inbound delegations. We have one coming in from Innovation Norway next week. And they're particularly interested in maritime and clean tech, but they're going to hear about everything that's going on throughout the county. So business retention and expansion, we talked already about some of that business advising, business ownership transitions, helping with issues that come up and helping them meet the right people that they need to meet to further their business. We have our SBDC certified business advisor as well in our office. And we also have Latino business retention expansion, which is basically the same services, but we don't let the fact that you may be limited in your English get in the way of running a successful business, so we can do the same thing in Spanish. Capacity building, we talked about what makes us stronger and more attractive and healthier as a community. All those things are activities that we have going on under that heading. Next Exec is a program we do every month, the fourth Tuesday of every month. This year it's going to be at 7:30, so breakfast is served at E-Ask. And that's a local professional development, if you think of Leadership Skagit as leadership development. This is professional and managerial development. And we go through a whole curriculum of different topics every month. Lisa Janicki is going to speak in May, I think it is, about how your business can help, how we can help your business navigate government interface. So we have lots of amazing experts on different issues all over Skagit County, and that's mainly who's going to be conducting these programs every month. Talked about that. Some of the collaborative projects, STEM comes to mind very quickly, and the early learning, all kinds of efforts in workforce and revitalization. We work very closely with Cedro Wully on the Opportunity Zones project. So pretty much all of downtown Cedro Wully is an opportunity zone. It's still a little bit of a murky thing, especially with the government shutdown with some more guidelines that were supposed to be issued. That apparently is not an emergency at this point to the government. So those kinds of, I've been reading everything I can get my hands on about how to create a marketable product, how to create things that will attract investment, whether it's in job creation or in affordable housing, because those are the two goals of Opportunity Zones. How can we figure out, and it's different for each zone, how can we figure out what our competitive advantages would be and capitalize on that? The broadband project is proceeding mainly with the Port of Skagit right now, trying to get the entire county access from one end to the other. And we're working very hard with the IPZ, which is focusing on value-added ag. So how can we find new ways to make money off of agriculture? Because that's one really good way to help preserve our agricultural lands. People who have the land need to be able to make a living off of it. So what are some new ways, new products, new outlets? So we have an agricultural export mission going to Korea February 19th, I think, for about a week, to find new markets for Skagit agricultural products in Korea. There we go, whoops. Upcoming events, so the first Next Exec of the year is this coming Tuesday. Economic Forecast Night, you already mentioned Spotlight on Skagit, Wednesday, April 10th, and then the golf tournament Friday, July 19th.
Any questions for John?
I have some more, I have one more slide, if you, only if you want it, on sort of our economic underpinnings for E-Ask.
Sure.
If you're interested. We'll see if you're able to see it, only if I can click on it. All right, I may have exhausted the battery. There we go. So revenue sources, and I'm not sure I can see this. In economic development organizations, we try to get a balance between public and private funding in organizations of this type where we're not in the government. So right now we're at about 60/40, public and private. So that's not bad. We'd like to get a little bit closer to parity, but not bad at all. And then expenses, of course, with an organization, you know, with most nonprofits, most of your expenses are going to be in your salaries. But that's who carries out the programs that we do. So we have administrative and other costs are around 20% and then the programs are the rest. So when Aaron sends that around, you'll get to see that closer up.
And if they have any questions, we can contact you.
Absolutely, anytime.
Right. All right, if there are no questions, thank you very much for coming, John.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will do staff reports. Good evening, Chief Tucker, how are you?
All right, just a couple things here. Our week has been kind of tied up with a very difficult subject that's housed up at North Sound. We've, the subject assaulted staff whenever he was brought in and we ended up dealing with him there. And then he had to go to the ER yesterday and eventually seven of us, including Councilman Couch, ended up going in, wrestling him down and getting him drugged up enough to go to the ER to get seen for some urgent medical care. And he's been a problem all week. It's just been a, it's kind of a nightmare and Aaron's got me to get ahold of the director of North Sound to try to see how this happened. A subject shouldn't be housed in any place like this. They don't belong in the jail, no ER is safe for them to be in, and apparently North Sound doesn't have the ability to manage them. So we're going to try to find out what's going on there. But Officer Eddie got punched repeatedly in the face yesterday when we tried to take, or tried to get the suspect strapped down to a gurney. Wasn't badly hurt, but he's banged up and tweaked his shoulder too and we all went down in a pile. So that's been kind of taken, pretty much every night since this guy's shown up, we've had to deal with him. And we're going to try to work out some details, but I think this is kind of a bigger, more of a society problem, is that we're running into more and more of these people and there's nowhere to go with them. We can actually deal with them, really. We get banged up a little bit every once in a while, but that used to be a Friday night in the castle. It's not much different than what we're used to doing. Still, it's not, it's not a good plan and even if we can manage these folks, there's nowhere to go with them. There's no place for them to be seen and treated. I know we're looking at coming up with another facility in town, it's going to be kind of a drop in the bucket, but if you have any pull, any direction we can give to our legislators, this is a, this is a topic that affects everything we do. It's sucking the time away from patrol officers, dealing with people with mental and/or drug issues, and it's just a, it's just a cross-strata society problem that we're kind of being hit with. This guy belongs in Western State Hospital, but there's no room for him there right now. He's supposed to go this weekend, or this Friday, so we're hoping we can get him into a place that he needs to be. He's seriously damaged and we need to do something different. But we're going to meet with the director up there as soon as we can, hopefully tomorrow morning, and see what we can come up with. And Officer Eddie should be at work tomorrow, hopefully he's not too banged up, but he took a couple of pretty hard shots right to the, right to the side of the face. We had our little construction project going on in our evidence room. We added on to our evidence room, we kind of took some unused space and turned it into more integrated into our evidence room for some more secure storage. And Nathan and his crew did a great job, as usual. If you guys haven't seen these guys working, get a chance, they're, they can do pretty much anything. They screw up a lot of stuff, but they do a pretty good job most of the time. And then next Tuesday, we're getting our newest guy out of the academy. If all goes well, he passes all of his tests and all his mock scenes, and if the mayor can still hold on to her schedule, we're going to go down and watch him graduate and get a new, a new body on the street, so, and that's all I have.
All right, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Yep.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Olson, how are you?
Good. Yes, we've been pretty busy ourselves, dealing with the same customer up there. And been pretty busy at the fire station. We've had approximately 100 transports this month already, so.
Wow.
And the transition's still been going real smooth. We're constantly, of course, training these medics to become firefighters, so, and a lot of them are, most of them are pretty excited about that too, so it's going well.
All right, thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Well, I got a few things on the agenda later today, so one of them is continuation of an annexation. The only reason I'm pointing it out now is we, in the meantime, have received a, an intent to commence annexation for a different area. I alluded to this at the last council meeting and, of course, as expected, we received that notice to commence. So I'm going to bring that to the council at the next council meeting. Hopefully we'll be done with the previous annexation item for a while and we can move on to the next one. And then, over the past couple of months, we had an advertisement out for requests for any possible, any needed changes to the comprehensive plan. We did not receive any requests for changes to the comprehensive plan or changes to the zoning code. But at the Joint City Council Planning Commission Work Session on March 6th, we'll meet with the, those two bodies and see if there's anything that the Planning Commission or the city council would like to see put on the 2019 docket. Staff has some items, of course, that we need to put on there. And we'll discuss all of that at the beginning of March, but just a little reminder out there that if there's something that you wanted to see in the comp plan that might need updated, or just items that you'd like to see the Planning Commission working on over the next, next year, be a good time to talk about those sorts of things at the March 6th Joint Conference, Joint Work Session. And I think that's, I'll leave you with that because I'll be talking to you a couple more times tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, just three quick items. Nathan's crew's busy with the remodel upstairs here in City Hall. You'll see my office is transforming into two offices, so we'll have a place to house Glenn Gardner, who's been hired to be our new IT specialist. You all recognize Glenn's name, as he's a current garbage truck driver and also a, one of the officers, volunteer officers in the fire department. So in addition to the posting authorized in the 2019 budget for solid waste, we're now looking for two positions, so that's ongoing. On the library project, SRV is mobilized and is actively engaged in the preload work. So if you drive by, you'll see a lot of rock starting to build up on that site. And the last item is today at 1:30 in the Senate, there was a hearing on SB 5366, which is Senator Wagner's multifamily tax exemption bill from last year that was introduced on behalf of Cedro Wully and other cities of our size and smaller to allow for that tax exemption program to help revitalize downtown. So we had written testimony put in, pretty much the same as we put in last year, and that's hopefully going to continue to move through the legislature this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think in interest of saving some time and not repeating myself, a little bit later this meeting, I have some comments and things, but I'll go ahead and say those for my fourth quarter report presentation a little later.
All right, thank you. Councilman Couch?
In the essence of time, I'll keep it brief, but I spoke, I had a couple business owners in the downtown reach out about concerns with Senate Bill 5326 concerning, I guess the best way to summarize it would be booth rentals in hair salons, places of cosmetology businesses and such, which would obviously have an impact on a couple businesses in our downtown. I reached out to Senator Wagner's office, he has no intention of supporting the bill and also understands the impact that this would have on small rural downtowns like ours. So hopefully the bill doesn't go anywhere, but keep an eye on that.
Thank you. Mr. Owen?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Corrigan?
I just wanted to say, so last Saturday, while I was at rehearsal for a show that I'm doing, they just happened to be doing a blood drive for Tatiana, our firefighter. He kind of came in and made an announcement, so it was a spur of moment thing, just last Saturday. They got 30 folks step up to do it. I tried, I guess I didn't have enough iron to do it that day, kind of last minute, but it was wonderful. So I finally got to meet her and her son and her husband and everything and hear her story from her and I was just, they were really surprised how many people came to donate blood. You know, that drive was just for her that day, so that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Kinser?
Nothing, Greg.
Councilman DeYoung?
Yeah, a couple things. Been spending some time out on, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, out on Railroad and Jamison because we've had neighbors talk about their concerns about speeders. We have a really, really nice repair to that road and so folks are been testing it out. And it is a 25 mile an hour speed zone and there are folks going much, much faster. I see Chief had to take a moment. I see Chief had to take a moment, but the 42 spots that he has indicated that are problem zones throughout Cedar Wully, I've done some personal time out there on Jamison and Railroad, observing folks. And I was wondering, Chief, I know you just had to step out for a bit, but we were just talking about Railroad and Jamison. Is it possible to get the radar trailer out there?
I'll look and see what we, if it's up and running, we ran out of cars for the other setup, data collection, but yeah, we can get that, we get Laura set up with that.
Thank you very much. It'll bring confidence to the neighbors there that we're addressing the problem. And then, secondly, I saw our Executive Director for Helping Hands here stepped up. But because of the partial federal shutdown, there has been inserted some trepidation about people getting their food stamps, and there's been a spike in demand at the food bank. And there will be a call out. If you have time to come help on a shift with distribution or back warehouse, need to rise as a community, help out others in the community. So you'll be hearing more about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Lee?
I can't think of anything.
Okay. Councilwoman Kelly?
I'm good for the night.
Okay.
I just have a couple things. First off, I want to send congratulations to Officer Carr, who is our code officer. She received the memorial for the late Deputy Ann Jackson through the Humane Society. They say of her, that Officer Carr effectively managed to receive a grant and to help develop the TRN. It's the Trap New to Release Cat Program. She continues to work diligently in managing this program. Officer Carr helps provide solutions to the community, and she engages her community to do the same. And that's why we are proud to give Officer Laura Carr, this year, the recipient of the 2018 Clayton Award. And she does work diligently. She's, she gets a lot of requests. She has to work within the community, and she does a great job, so I want to send out a congratulations to her. And then also, I was down in Olympia today, spent most of the day down there at the Mayor's Exchange Conference, and we talked about things like the Governor's Mental Health Transformation Plan and the Governor's, the Governor's Budget Proposal. But we did also talk about the behavior health. That is a subject that is actually at the top of the list for the Governor. So I would imagine that there's going to be more topics, talks about this, and hopefully monies that will be sent this way. The one thing that they did say was that, that the Western State Hospital, they are keeping it open. There's 800 patients that are there. They're keeping it open because those patients have nowhere to go. However, they're really hoping that around the state, as they put money into the communities, they will build behavior health facilities and will have a place in for people, like the subject you were talking about, to go. So that is something that is being addressed. And then we also talked about the Criminal Justice Training Commission Program, the funding for that, getting officers in. Problem that we have here, which is not unlike all the other cities around the, around the state, whenever we hire an officer, it usually takes several months to get them into the academy. And they're going to be changing up the program a bit, tweaking it a bit, adding more money to it, so we should be able to get our officers in sooner. So that's about all I have to share. It was a great, was a great exchange, lots of information, and it'll be beneficial, actually, to the city of Cedar Wully. Okay, so at this time, I am going to open up the floor for public comment. And before you come forward, I just want to state, for those of you who may be here to talk about the Reed Street project, if you can hold your comment until we, we actually address the Reed Street land, that's going to be under unfinished business just a little later. If you can wait to do that then, that would be great. So I'll open up the public comment, though, for those who may want to address something else. Please give your name and address, and try to keep it to three minutes. And I'm opening it up at 7:54. So anyone for public comment? Okay. I will close it then at 7:55. And we are also going to be opening up the floor to a public hearing. I suppose some of you saw this. It is to consider an ordinance establishing a utility connection fee pursuant to RCW 3592025 for real estate property benefited by a sanitary sewer main on West Bennett, West Nelson, Beatty, Robinson, and Borseth Streets. So before I open that up for the public to make comments in the public hearing, I think, Aaron, are you going to share a little bit about this?
Sure, thank you. Mark's celebrating his wedding anniversary tonight, so he sends his regards, but Dana really wasn't super excited about date night at City Council, so I hope you understand. The detail from Mark, the memo from Mark is very detailed, so I won't go through it at that level, but for mostly the public's benefit, I'll provide a summary. So the City Council authorized this project to move forward last year on the basis that we've used for four other projects that I can think of, where the city utility advances funds to build sewer in a certain area, and then establishes a special connection fee to recover those costs over time based upon the maximum development potential in that area. This is a unique project in that the maximum development potential requires a connection fee that would be higher than the council at the time thought would be economically reasonable. So the math on this is as follows. The estimated cost of the base project, which is the West Bennett, West Nelson, Beatty project, was 541,000. Came in about 100 less, at 449,000, and that will serve 23 potential customers. The second phase of this project would pick up Robinson and Borseth and an additional 15 services. And that's a 2019 project, and that's estimated to cost 133,000. So the combination of the two projects will serve 38 services at a cost of 582,209 dollars, or 15,321 dollars per service. The highest prior special connection fee in the city was our North Fruitdale project, and that was set at 3,450 dollars. So when this was first in concept form, the council said, you know, let's follow that same path, however, let's not go above what North Fruitdale was. Now, the 3,450 for North Fruitdale actually did cover that project's cost. So that's, that's why I say this one's kind of unique. So what that means for somebody in this area is, once the council establishes the connection fee, folks who are within 200 feet of the new sewer system will get a 90-day letter where they're directed to connect to the city's sewer. And within 90 days, they come in and apply for a permit, which they then have 180 days to fulfill, which is physically connecting and paying the fees. They would pay 6,995 dollars, which is the city's general facilities charge. Everybody pays that. And what that covers is really a new customer's share of what the rest of the customers in the utility have paid for their lifetime or as long as they've been part of the system. So it's buying in their share of the pipe in the ground and the plant that they'll be using. The 3,450 that they'll pay on top of the 6,995 covers really only about 20% of the cost of the extension into their neighborhood. The remaining dollars are then covered by the system itself. So that's the rest of us pitching in to help, help extend the sewer into this part of the city. Now, if they connect within this time period, and I say if, because Cedar Wully has another unique feature, which is we allow people to say, "Thank you, but no, I'd like to keep my septic system." And as long as their system is in good working order, and they can prove that up, they can opt out of connecting until such time as they sell, subdivide, or have a failure in their septic system. So if they take that pass, they'll connect whenever they choose to connect in the future with those circumstances. However, if they do connect within that initial time period, the city provides a 2,855 dollar septic decommissioning credit, which was a carrot established by the City Council many years ago to encourage people to connect to the system. So I think that gives you the overview of how that works and what the dollars are. The only change that I would anticipate between this draft and the next is, I believe we've got a minor tweak to the legal description, which is really not germane to your conversation tonight, but this ordinance is, actually gets recorded with the county auditor and is discoverable when any title search is done for properties in this neighborhood. So this is one that, at the second reading, we'll have the precise legal description ready for you. So after passage, it would be, you know, newly recorded with the auditor's office. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
So if they decide to, if they decide to connect, they have how long to?
They've got, they've got to come in and apply for the permit within 90 days, and then they have 180 days to physically connect and make payments, and make their payment to the system.
So when they make the payments, that's like a payment arrangement kind of thing? That would be how it works?
Normally, it's just you write the check. But a couple of years ago, the city did create a program where people can pay over time. And what that specifically allows for is a, an installment contract, and that charges an interest rate at the same rate as the effective annual interest rate of the most recent City of Cedar Wully local improvement district bond issue, or sewer utility revenue bond issue. And you have to put 10% down, and then you can run it out up to 72 months.
That's, thank you. Any more questions? Then at 8:01, I will open up the floor for those who may want to come up and give public comment at this hearing regarding the sewer extension project. Is there anyone to speak on this? If not, then I will close it at 8:02. Okay, so what I have here, I wasn't sure if I understood you correctly, Mr. Berg, but actually, Mr. Freiberger has a recommendation. He's recommending that the council pass the attached ordinance on page 189.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring this back to the next council meeting for action.
Okay, all right. So then we will move on to the unfinished business, the Reed Street land. And again, after we've talked about this and taken any questions from the council, I'll open this up to public comment. So Reed Street, who is, who's doing Reed Street?
Well, I can introduce that one as well. It's on page 196 of the packet. And you can see we've got a bit of an audience tonight. Both Teresa Pugh and some folks from Habitat are here and have been offered an opportunity to present to the council. And then the neighbors via Marlin were notified as well by the mayor that this would be on the agenda tonight. So what I wanted to provide in the memo is really just the background to let you know how we got where we got. And specifically, maybe for those who haven't heard this in the public, the city purchased this property in 2014 specifically for stormwater facilities. What we had at that time was an issue on North Central Street, as well as an issue on the northern boundaries of this property. The North Central Street was causing a pretty significant neighborhood dispute, and the north boundary of this property was unmaintainable because it was clogged with, well, it was actually pretty remarkable. The neighbors along that line were doing everything from dumping grass clippings to use tires to, you name it, in the drainage ditch, and that was backing water up. So, you know, we acquired the property, cleared out the ditch, solved the North Central Street problems. I don't think we've had any complaints from our, our neighbor disputes there since. Cleaned up the property, and at the time, City Council had looked at this as a site for drainage, and maybe we'd sell it in the future for redevelopment, maybe it would be developed into a park, maybe it'd be developed into open space. I think we've got just two council members left from that era, if I'm not mistaken. So speak up if you remember something different. In order to give the council the full, well, the language actually was specifically, stormwater facilities, including connecting water from the east to the west over the property, possibly including stormwater retention in the future, and possibly including wetland mitigation. So I attached the memo from September of 14 in the packet, so you can see what was actually before the council. We, the city then contracted with the Philbin Group to provide a conceptual design for how the property could be used as a park. The purpose of that design was really to inform the City Council as to the full range of options prior to any sort of council decision. So it wasn't just an abstract, maybe a park, but, you know, we really wanted the council to see what it could look like. So the, the draft design that you have really was designed without any public process, public input, or council input. It was a landscape designer's vision of how this could be developed into something as a public space. And then finally, late last year, Habitat contacted the city. They've got this partnership with the school district and have a number of sites near the school, and have an interest in continuing to support self-help home development specifically in Cedar Wully within reasonable distance from the high school to maintain that partnership in the future. They asked us for help, and the help was, do you have any sites that we should be aware of? Not just city sites, but really anything. And, you know, we identified this as a potential site. Habitat then made an offer to the City Council, and really, that's what brings us here tonight, is we've got an offer from Habitat to purchase it. At the same time, we've got a group of folks in the community who'd like to see a park. And from a staff standpoint, we're looking for direction from you. My last note is, there are no assumptions in the 2019 budget about this property. So no assumptions that it would be sold, no assumptions that it would be turned into a park, and there is no money in the budget to do anything at this point. So this is really a wide-open slate for the City Council to make a decision about the future of, of the Reed Street property.
Okay. All right, so Teresa, shall we start with you? I know you have a presentation that you'd like to give.
Okay, I want to make sure I, I'm short, as everyone knows. Thank you for allowing Skagit Habitat for Humanity to come and talk about the potential purchase of Reed Street and working with the council and working with the people in the neighborhood, neighborhood of Reed Street. We, I put together a PowerPoint presentation. A lot of it has data related to Skagit County, related to affordable rents, related to homeownership, and, and our program. I'm not going to go over all of the data, but I just want to let you know that if, Aaron, if you can make it available for everyone, and if anyone from the public wants to see the information, contact the city or contact myself at Habitat. But I will go, I can't talk very loud, so I will go over a few of the documentation. So as most people know, Skagit Habitat for Humanity and habitats around the world, our main focus is building permanent, affordable, safe housing for low-income families. We serve families that fall within the 30% to 60% of the area median income, and those are families that are hard-working families, that typically don't get a chance to even have the opportunity to purchase a home via, because of their finances. And so we, in Skagit County, because of our volunteers and supporters, we are currently in Mount Vernon, and we're working, finishing within the next couple of weeks, our 34th and 35th home. And so, once we come back out to Cedar Wully, we have a property that we did a groundbreaking last Saturday. Thank you to everybody that attended. Over 80 people from the community came, Congressman Larson came, and after the event was open, you know, several of the members here came after the event was open. Keith Wagner pulled in, unfortunately, because he was late, because he was working on some other things. But we thank you for the support, because we have four families that we'll be building homes for, and they're super excited. Several of those families work in Cedar Wully already, and their children go to Cedar Wully School Districts, as well as they themselves have gone to Cedar Wully School. And they're very excited. Our homeownership program, again, I'm not going to go over all the information, but a lot of data, as most people know, rentals, as well as fair market value for homes, has gone up drastically. In our county, just within, you know, average is 1,300, but realistically, a three-bedroom home rents for 1,400 to 1,800 right now, as a 30% to 60% area median income is not affordable. for rentals, and especially not for a fair market value for home ownerships. So that's why we're here. It continues to rise, and we have a program that actually works where our homeowners pay less than $1,000 right now for, our highest to date is $925 for their home payment. That is to purchase their home. That is a forever home. Those families live in those homes, the children go to school, the children thrive, the families thrive, you get them financially stable. And with that, then they become a big part of the community, and also financially, economically for the community. It really does make a huge difference in the school district. The big thing with Reed Street, as you mentioned, you know, we're looking for area because we want to, once we're finished with these homes, we need in our pipeline to have land to build more homes. And if you're going to purchase property that needs to be developed, which Reed Street would be, we'd have to put a lot of money into the infrastructure and the development. It could take two years to even get to the point to get the property to be developed and ready to be buildable. So for us, that's where our mark is with Beatty Street, working on those homes. And if this was available to purchase, we would start that process. We would be making a big economic purchase and, you know, putting money back into this community by just developing the property, let alone putting the monies into the homes and then the families down the road. So we would love to move forward with us and know that in our future, we have homes set for the future, as well as the partnership, which Wes Allen from, we'll be talking about that in a little bit, with the Cedar Wully School District. But big thing is, I was doing some research, and again, I won't go everything, but in the Growth Management Act, it states that all cities and counties, there's certain aspects to affordable homeownership. And as part of Cedar Wully, that, you know, part of your plan is to provide adequate affordable homeownership. And we are here to say that that's what we do, and we are very excited to be back in Cedar Wully again doing that, and would love to do that for the future. So please keep that in mind, that we can be part of your plan as well, your Growth Management Act plan. Again, most of this I would love for anyone that's interested to take a look at this, because there's a bit of data and there's some really, actually, I open fascinating data. We, homeowners come in, there's all kinds of situations, why they need to have a safe home, whether it's because the rents are too high, whether it's because they pay too much in utilities, whether it's they're living multi-families within one housing, and we solve that problem. Our solution again is being able to provide an affordable home that's safe, that's permanent, where the families can thrive, where they can become volunteers, where they can become an active part of your community and help give back. And actually, I have a lot of success stories where they now make some amazing changes themselves. I have one family where they taught their children through the financial process and through the Habitat process, all of their children, they have one left at home now, but the five adults that they have, they all are now homeowners, because their parents learned and had the ability to purchase their home, and saved and thrived, and taught them to be financially stable. By the time that they became adults, those children now are homeowners. So, you know, we're giving back in many ways. I've got, this is our economic impact, which is kind of fascinating. Not only do we provide volunteer opportunities, we provide the safe homes, but we, just in our homeowners, current homeowners, we've invested over $625,000 back into Skagit County in property taxes alone, let alone our store provides huge tax revenue. So some pretty fascinating information. Couple of our homes, this is volunteers. We raised the wall, we start, we start out just like we're going to be doing Beatty Street here within a couple of weeks, and it's a lot of fun. And this is one of the homes that it's going to be dedicated with in the next month in Mount Vernon. A few of our homeowner pictures. They are people that you know and work with every day. This is Beatty Street. This was the before. If you drive out to Beatty now, the homes were demolished, and it is raw land now, and we will start working on those here shortly. I'm going to have Wes Allen, who's one of our board members, talk about the partnership with the school district.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you for letting me speak in front of you tonight. Wanted to make sure I covered a couple of things really quickly. There we go. One of the things that Skagit Habitat for Humanity is really proud of is the training programs that we have, whether it be through working at the store that we have down in downtown Mount Vernon, or working on the job site. And I know, listening to John and Ian earlier, that's one of the things we really are priding ourselves on, is giving back to the community and giving opportunities for folks to be able to connect, not only with their fellow community members, but also get those skills in a supervised working environment, so that they can build a resume, to be able to enhance themselves for the future. Again, 330 people have received on-the-job training so far with Habitat for Humanity in Skagit County. And then, along with Goodwill and some other organizations, we are one of the greater providers of that kind of opportunity here in Skagit County. Some of the things that we highlight here on the screen, I will go over all of them, is the homeowner support that we offer to folks. It's one thing to have a group come in and offer affordable housing, and, you know, get that opportunity for folks to be able to buy that first house, but the structure that's been set up for many, many years, everybody who knows Habitat in the United States, they're connected to us as an organization for that term of their ownership. And so we offer that support for them on an ongoing basis. It's not like, here you go, take a house, you're on your own, let's walk away. Being on the executive board with all the folks that are here tonight, it's nice to see that there is that support, whether it be financial, or any kind of support that might be needed for that family. So it's not a give-and-walk-away kind of system. It is an ongoing support for that 30 years, that they are paying actually the mortgage via us to the bank for the house that they purchased. We partner with many service clubs, organizations, businesses, take the opportunity to be able to work with us, to be able to create that good environment that you want to have within your community. Adneal State churches and faith groups, we do it through many different ways, but there's a faith build that we do on a yearly basis, that we bring out folks from the community to be able to, again, connect with the folks in their community. And then another one that we do with that is a women's build week that we've been lucky to do for three years now, Teresa, five years now. It's actually, we work in partnership with Lowes to be able to have an intentional time where we encourage young ladies to do non-traditional fields and come on out and actually build on our site for a period of time of a week, right? Yes, a week, thanks. Got to double-check with Teresa. We also work with students, interns, many other folks, to make sure that they have opportunities, again, to build that resume and improve themselves long-term. We have out-of-state groups, which I'll talk about because it's on the next slide. And then LAX, but not least, again, is the individuals that can come and give back. We're an opportunity for a lot of our retired citizens, and so on and so forth, to be able to come out and still connect with the community and still keep that high quality of life, like Ian was talking about earlier, and I know is one of the city's missions. So one of the things that to kind of consider as you're making a decision is, we've been lucky for the last two years to be able to have the RV care vanners to come and work on our site in Mount Vernon, and they'll be coming to work on our Beatty Street location this year. It's about an eight-week period of time during the summer where these groups that go around that are RVers, and they want to give back to the community. So it's an opportunity for Cedar Wully, or Greater Cedar Wully, to be able to talk about that vision that Ian was bringing forward about the city. And they come in, they work on the house, they give back to the community, they purchase things in stores, they stay in hotels and B&amp;Bs, they do all those kind of things, and it's an opportunity for them to give back, but as again, it's an opportunity for them to understand what Cedar Wully is, and to get that connection for what my family did moving up here five years ago, is that small-town, good, give-back kind of feel that you get from just being in Cedar Wully. And so it's a great opportunity for us to be able to show off for them via the care vanners coming through. And last but not least, the most important part, and I can actually slow down talking about that, is we are partnered here with the high school and also the community, the Northwest Career Tech, to be able to build the house that we have currently on the Beatty Street location. And as Teresa noted earlier, our goal is to maintain growth in that project. This is a program that is national now. It started actually down in Loveland, Colorado, and has been expanded to three different locations in the state of Washington. The tie-in with Habitat for Humanity gives an opportunity for students to make that connection. So not only are they having that great success with improved skills in the area of mathematics, which I don't know about anybody else in the room, wasn't my strong suit growing up through high school, because you're making connections to things. But the nice part in this is that they actually see the why in a complex skill like geometry, which, again, if you can see it and then do it, it's much more impactful for students. Luckily, our state, from the educational level, is seeing that, and that's how they actually test the students on, is the application of the skill, not the rote memory of the computation. They are able to do so many different things within that to be able to enrich the lives not only of the students, but it does something that I'm sure everybody's connected somehow to a teenager, whether it be niece, nephew, grandson, kid, whatever. It does something that's very unique that I like to point out. It creates an opportunity for teenage folks to be altruistic, which is a foreign word for them usually. Usually, it's thinking all about themselves, it's kind of a me thing. When you're actually able to have that opportunity for students to think beyond themselves, and why they're doing what they're doing, how they're building this house to be able to benefit a family in our community, they get, oh, I like to say the aha moment hits them, when they go to a dedication or a groundbreaking like we did on Saturday, and they start thinking about not only what impact they have on things, but, again, the power of working for the community. So I'm going to stop there unless there's any questions about that program and hand it over to John Doyle to talk about logistical stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't have a great deal to add. I think you've got a lot, a very good view of Habitat, and what we do, how we do it, and where we go. A lot of people like myself, I'm a former planner for LaConner and administrator there, so I have a very understanding of how communities want to develop, and how you want to have a diversity of your community and fulfill your needs. One of the things that I think that really needs, that you need to know about us, is that we're here to help your community and help your community fulfill its mandate as well. And it's not an either-or for us, so if the park is an aspect that is a part of the dynamic that looks to be the best fit and best combination, we are here to work with you and work with your community to make it fulfill its desires. Affordable housing is our primary mandate. We want your, and I'm sure within your comp plan and within your planning criteria and priorities, that is important to you as well. So however we can fulfill that mandate, and however we can make those things come to fruition, we're here to be that. And so, that's all.
All right, thank you. From the community regarding the park, is there someone who'd like to come up and speak regarding that?
It's a tough act to follow. Good job. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and constantly emerged the chance to come and, excuse me, share again our concerns from the community there in Brickard. As I shared last time I was here, there's two trailer courts, apartments on Murdoch, and apartments on Central, Logan Apartments right behind my house. And knowing that kids play in the parking lots and the streets, I throw several kickballs back over each week to Logan Apartments. And so I encourage you to look at the safety aspects. There's no park north of 20. And we need one. That's a good area. It's central, and my wild guess, I would say there's probably a thousand residents that'd be around that park. It could become probably the most used park in Cedar Wully. So as you consider this, I really, really encourage you to look at that, knowing it's going to be used by not only the elderly, but by a lot of the kids getting off of the streets and out of the parking lots and playing there. So, and it's going to be a tough decision for you to think of that presentation and looking at that, but I encourage you to put a park there, move forward with a park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this?
I've got a couple hobblers here. I just had a needy place, and his hip is out, so.
Could I get you to give your name and address, please?
Bert Sheridan, 912 Alderwood Lane, Cedar Wully. I grew up in Redmond, Washington. It was a small hamlet, 700 people. It's the same Redmond that you're thinking about right now. And tremendous changes there in the years that I was there. If you ask the old-timers there and the city council now, what do you like about Redmond the best, they might say Microsoft for obvious reasons, but they might just as well say Merrimore Park, or the downtown Redmond Park, which was preserved, a couple little log cabins, and they were going to tear, very valuable property. They were going to tear it down, and community said no. There's not really too much housing around that park. But Marlin is right, north of the highway, there's nothing for, I don't know how many units are there in those apartments, and the two or three trailer parks, but it's hundreds and hundreds of homes with no place to play. I don't want to take anything away from Habitat for Humanity. I've been fans for, I've been a fan for years, decades. They do a wonderful job. But I'd like to see somebody help them find someplace else to build right here in Cedar Wully. I think we could do it. Matter of fact, if somebody wants to talk to me, I have property adjacent to that park that I might donate for that purpose. So I'm just encouraging everybody to think about not just the new homes and the benefits to those people who would be working with Habitat for Humanity, but to the hundreds of people who already live here, who need that benefit of that park. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Louis Leecway, 310 West Bennett, Cedar Wully. I had the opportunity here a few months ago to, being asked to do some services through my business for Habitat for Humanities. And I really hadn't done anything like this before for them, but when I learned that of what they were trying to do, and it was right in my neighborhood, right, I live on West Bennett, and these four lots are down on Beatty, I thought, well, what a good opportunity to start my possible retirement by, you know, doing some more of these things like this. So I donated services that I was able to do, and I like what they are all about. And I also have quite an experience with the Reed Street property that I'd like to share with you. Back in 2007 and 2008, for a developer, I won't mention his name, we did a preliminary plat. It was actually approved by the city for 15 homes on this Reed Street property. It was a very difficult piece of property to be able to do that with at the time because of the drainage issue. But we did get an approved preliminary plat. But we did get an approved preliminary plat. And the reason it didn't get built was because this individual skipped town, he skipped the county, and I think he skipped the whole state. We never could find him. It was just at the beginning of the downturn, which was unfortunate. But I will say this about that piece of property. Not only is it able to withstand some development, there could be a compromise between, you know, building self-help or Habitat for Humanity homes on there, in cooperation with maybe a little bit of it for a park. On that preliminary plat that we did, we did have a section of it that was designated for the community park. So, and I have what the map looked like if any of you would like to see it sometime. But also, in my experience with dealing with the Growth Management Act, there are some advantages to this city allowing for not only homes to be built on it, but also for recreation. Because under the Growth Management Act, there are certain goals that are related to your comprehensive plan requirements, and that is to increase affordable housing opportunities within the city. And another big one is encouraging infill. By that means you try to allow for development on these large parcels of land which are inside the city limits, not necessarily having to reach out into the urban growth areas and try to take in some of that area. And lastly, it puts a lot of these properties that are either in an entity owned by the city or some other entity that isn't paying taxes on it, a lot of it will go back on the tax rolls. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, Teresa?
Our program is all about families. And so we obviously, we partner with everyone. And so we're willing to talk and have communication, and we're not coming over to take over a huge parcel. And again, as Louis had mentioned, there was, on the original plat that was approved by the city, there was a small portion in there for a park. So definitely, if there needs to be other conversations and if we need to talk, then, you know, we're just open to, we want to come into Cedar Woolley. We want to be able to be near this high school and have the students have that opportunity and be able to be a part of your comp plan. But we are not, we work with everyone and we want everyone to be happy in the sense of we're not here to come and take over. So we believe in partnerships. That's the only way we exist is because of partnerships. So we just appreciate your, everyone's information and everyone's partnership.
Great. Thank you. Teresa? I think Councilwoman Kinser has a question for you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Questions?
Yeah. I wanted to ask what your current waiting list looks like in Skagit County right now. How many families do you have waiting to begin or get on the list to build a home?
So currently for Habitat, we don't choose, we go through quite a process when they're selected. And we have six families that are waiting to get into homes. Two of them are going to be the ones that are going to be in Mount Vernon. And then we have four families already selected for the Beatty Street property. We don't choose them unless we have property because we don't want them to get the hopes up. And then if we don't find property, we don't want them to be in our program forever. So we, last time we had the orientation, 60 people showed up to the orientation. The orientation is where we let the public know what our program is and all the criteria, and that's where they have the opportunity to apply. There's a huge need for it. We would love to be able to produce more homes, but it's all about the area and land, finding homes and land. So we don't want to select families until we do have land, and that's another part of our, to be able to move forward. Working with the school district, we feel that we're setting ourselves up in a position to where we will be able to build more homes as well, because as their program, the students, as it develops, we can produce more homes. But again, we have to have land to be able to do that. So that's part of this, is we're looking to develop, we've got an amazing board and amazing donors, we're looking for the future. And it's, yeah, so if we had more land available, we would be able to select families sooner, but we don't want to choose them until it's available. But I think we all know, my waiting list, I have a waiting list of over 150 people that are waiting for the orientation, that want to come to the orientation.
Okay. Wow. Okay. And are there any other properties in Cedar Woolley that you've got interest in at this time?
At this time, no, we are looking to potentially look at some infill lots. We're starting to look for that opportunity, but at this time, there's no other property. There was a property owner that contacted us, but it's just outside of the city limits, and so it's not buildable at this time because it doesn't have utilities out there. If anyone knows of any land, please let us know. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Couch?
I just have a couple of comments. I think this has been good to have this conversation, and obviously, it's a tough decision for the city council. I do, I like to see what, I like seeing what Habitat did with like the locations on Beatty where we take down houses that have served their purpose and they need to go away, and we provide that opportunity. But my current position is I believe that, you know, the city doesn't have a large inventory of land. We have a growing population, and we need to hang on to the open space that we have and develop a plan, a detailed plan of what types of park facilities we want to locate throughout the city. I don't want the community members to, you know, get their hopes up that we're going to break ground right away on a park if the city decides not to sell it, because I think we need to take a step back. And I said this tonight in our Parks Commission meeting, that we need to develop a plan and look at where we're placing things, and we're strategically placing our parks and making, you know, good decisions, because we'll run out of open space in the city. You know, it's not, we don't have an endless inventory within the city limits. And just, I want the council to know that my position is that I don't believe it's proper at this time for the city to sell the property.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
I have a couple of things, the way I feel. I have a feeling for Habitat, it's a good organization, it helps a lot of people that can't afford homes. But Cedar Woolley is really lagging as far as family parks. The park we have, the major park riverfront, is completely overrun in the summertime. You cannot find a place to go down there with your family and have a picnic. So I firmly believe that the property that we have in the city should be considered as a park. I know it's not going to happen this year, maybe next year, or even the next year, but when we have the money, we have the property. It's a good location. There is a lot of residences around there. I rode down through there yesterday, in fact. There's a lot of people that live in that area, and we do need the parks. And you know that, Aaron, we're way behind as far as the other cities having family The way I feel is we should, I agree with Councilman Couch, we should hang on to that property right now and give it some serious consideration about coming up with the money to start to develop it anyway. If we could just get grass in there, you know, people could start using that property. That's my feeling.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, sorry, I just wanted to say that from maybe five years ago, I've been really, really wanting a park in Ward 2, which is my ward, and knocking on the doors back then and just seeing the kids, I've actually witnessed the kids playing in the streets, I mean, six, seven years old, and mentioned it at the doors to the parents, and they were like begging for a park even that long ago. And I thought we would have one by now, but it's harder than I thought it would be. And who knows what the next opportunity could be for a park. So I mean, I don't want to rush into building there necessarily. I think as much as I love Habitat, of course, I volunteer every year for Women's Build Week. I feel like that there's another opportunity for that somewhere else, hopefully. I'm actually going to be looking, but right now, I really feel like a park is definitely more necessary there, as much as we need affordable housing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kinser?
I'd like to say I'm fully supportive of Habitat. I really love what you're doing and love who you're partnership with. I just think it's a great, great organization, providing opportunities for families. But I have to agree with our other council members, we own this property now as a city, and if we let this property go and we're to determine in the future that we need more land for parks, it's going to cost us a lot more to buy more land, if it's even available for a park in the future. So I would like to hang on to this land as a city for a park in the future, knowing what the needs are going to be on the north side of Highway 20.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman DeYoung?
So I have a couple of questions first. The wetland mitigation, is that in the northwest section of that plat?
If you look on page 201 of the packet, you see what the designer's calling enhanced wetlands. That's approximately where the existing wetlands are, but made to look more pretty as part of a park. The mitigation, though, that I was talking about in the 2014 memo, could have been broader than that, using the site essentially to construct a mitigation area for other projects.
Okay. And then I didn't catch the name of the first public commenter.
Marlon Miller.
I'm sorry?
Marlon Miller.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Mr. Miller, you said that there was no park north of Central. Did you mean north of Moore or 20?
North of 20.
Okay. So I took that information a couple of months ago and investigated that. There is actually North Cottage Lane that comes off of Township is, part of that development was a park for the city that the city does own. It's a bunch of trees right now and doesn't, and technically, the public has access to it. And I think that's with the understanding that there might be future link-up of property that might be transferred over to the city. It's exactly, it abuts the east boundary of Tony Splain's place. So just a technical point there. Also, Mr. Sheridan, you mentioned that you're from Redmond. I have a little history there too with my great uncle, Hey, having a chicken farm out there that now is a couple buildings for Microsoft. So I appreciate what you're saying there. So we can't cast the city in amber. There is, change is happening, and people are moving here. And there is a quality of life we want to enjoy here. People have legacy here with their family. We're resilient folks. They've gone through downtimes and uptimes, and, you know, that's why we love Cedar Woolley. So I really appreciate what you had to say about Redmond and how that relates to Cedar Woolley. I really want to support what Councilmember Couch had to say about a comprehensive parks plan and how we go forward and have a plan forward so we don't get into these coin flip winner-loser situations of putting programs against great programs. So I look forward to watching that develop and evolve, especially with a transparent process with a robust community involvement. So again, thank you for coming. Thank you for your petitions. Thank you for reaching out and contacting us. Really appreciate the outreach and knowing that everyone on this council hears you and believes in what you want for the neighborhood. And then, of course, Habitat for Humanity, a fantastic organization. Thank you for all your time here too. And really appreciated the last commenter about, you know, if it is to be a park, it is to be a park, we're going to keep working. So again, this is not winners and losers of a coin flip. I think it's, everyone here is winning because we're going to find a solution for it. But I think at the end of the day, we're going to be listening to the neighbors around that neck of the woods, right? Because they have to be there every day and look at it and evolve with it. I think there's also an opportunity to get access to our park systems because this information sparked my interest and to do some due diligence and ask questions and find out things. And it is, there's a need to get people access to our parks. And there's a great barrier for that with Highway 20. There is a light there and a railroad trestle. Don't recommend using the railroad trestle. But it would be good to see some sort of infrastructure, safe grade separation for non-motorized folks to get across Highway 20 to our great parks over on this side of Highway 20. Great opportunity to talk about things, and this is what makes Cedar Woolley great, is that we talk about things and try to set a plan forward. So I just want to appreciate everyone that came. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeYoung? I mean, Dunley? Sorry about that.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay. And Councilwoman Kelly?
Well, I appreciate both points of view. I really do. I'm on the Parks Committee. I've supported Nathan and his projects all along. I really believe in them. I also believe in the Habitat for Humanities program and the value that goes through with students learning to work on projects through the Geometry and Construction projects and the CTE programs at the high school. Last year, I had the opportunity to hear a young man talk about how he didn't understand math at all until he entered the Geometry and Construction's project. And all of a sudden, it made sense to him when they were laying out how to figure out how to do square footage for a carpet. You know, to me, that really hit home as to what a young person could take away from that type of learning as opposed to just doing those things on a piece of paper. And I think that the partnership that Habitat has developed with our school district is amazing. So thank you to Habitat for that. As far as the parks part of this goes, this is where we really get into some questions that I come up with, because a lot of the parks projects that require some funding that we don't have, we talked about that tonight at our Parks Committee, in that we're still looking for funding for the Winnie Hauser Park. We're still looking for funding for up at the Swift Center, going into that park up there. Those funds may or may not come through the legislature this year and/or through our own programs here. So one question I have to those of you who live in that neighborhood is what are you willing to do to make this park a reality? Are you just expecting the city to do it? Or are you willing to put your blood, sweat, and tears in the same way that Habitat is?
Can I ask you that?
Yeah, you can. Just let me finish first.
Yeah, I do.
But, you know, those are the things that I think are something to consider as well, and that's why I bring them up.
All right. Thank you.
That's an excellent point. I was involved with the Hammer Heritage Park that Spud Wally worked on for years. And the volunteers are the ones who put that park together. Louis, I think you were in on that as a member of the Rotary. You had a great part in that. And that's the kind of... And that's the kind of participation I think is available, if we just go out and get after it. I got a feeling, you could have all kinds of people over there, working on that property on a volunteer basis, with equipment and everything. So I think it's there. Just as Habitat for Humanity works with volunteers, we could do the same thing.
I have another question. So, the city owns that property right now. What are the consequences for people going to walking on that property or riding their BMX bicycles on that property?
Well, the property's not currently open to the public, so it's not set up for that. There's some work that would need to be done if we were to open it up to the public, and we'd probably maintain it to a different level.
All right, so they'd be trespassing?
They would be trespassing, but probably not chased off.
Okay, because I try to put myself and my 10-year-old boy on my bicycle, trying to, you know, get a game of Sandlot baseball out there, and that's not a possibility right now. Okay, thank you.
So I, I'm going to wrap this up because of time, and we have a few other business items that we need to take care of. But I want to thank everybody who contributed tonight. No doubt, it's been expressed, I think beautifully by the entire council up here, that what you both offer is something that this community really needs and wants. I got rather excited when I heard that there would be a compromise with the park and the building of homes, and I was really hoping that maybe the council would seize upon that. It doesn't sound like that's going to be happening tonight. It sounds like the council is favoring saving that land until they make a decision as to what they really want to do with it, whether it be park or where they go with that. So, I thank everybody for your participation. I know that I shared with you, Teresa, already, especially on Saturday, which was a beautiful ceremony, it was absolutely lovely, that I think it is a beautiful marriage between the school and Habitat coming together, the students having the opportunity to go in, take that knowledge, and then being able to apply it and see how it actually works in, you know, in life. How do you make that all happen? So, on behalf of the city, we're really glad that you're here, and we're very glad that you're working with the schools and the students and the lives that are going to be touched, not just, not just the families, but also the students who are going to have opportunity to do this. So, and I also want to thank you from Brickyard Estates and coming in and making a statement about, you know, this is our concern. We have, you know, hundreds of homes, we have children that are there, we have a need. There were a lot of petitions that were submitted. The last time you were here, I think we actually addressed that. A lot of petitions that were submitted by that community. So we know that everyone there is very much invested in the idea of having a park. So, I thank you all, and I don't want to say that there are winners and losers, but I do feel a bit sad. I'm going to just express that. I do feel a bit sad that there couldn't have been some sort of a compromise. So, from that, I will close that. Thank you very much to all of you. And I hope we can do more business here, Mr. Cedar Woolley.
Okay, so we will move on now to the amendments. I guess, John, this is you, isn't it? The amendment to the residential 15 zone? Are we moving on?
I actually have the annexation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the township, North Township, okay. So, yeah, North Township annexation request, possibly to adopt a resolution accepting the annexation boundaries, and forwarding the annexation petition, so.
What resolution number would it be?
If this is passed, it'd be Resolution 1015-19.
Okay, so this is a second read on a request for a resolution to pass two, as the mayor read, accept the legal description of this annexation, and move it on to the, giving the city support to move it on to the Boundary Review Board for their consideration before it would come back to the city council for a final decision. As I pointed out at the last public hearing for this, this was an area that was added to the urban growth area in 2016, after about four years of consideration of where the city should expand its urban growth area. After careful consideration, this was an area that was considered best suited for future development because of its access to, its access to the highway, the city's ability to extend sewer to the area, and its lack of critical areas such as flood plain and farm areas. So, the city really is hemmed into the east, south, and west. So, our future growth really can only go north. There were some questions about how much, how many units could be in the area. So, in the 71-acre area that's proposed for the annexation, I did a little bit of math and saw that it was about, if every acre of potential residential land out there was developed, there'd be about 131 units. That's not accounting for critical areas or just people who don't want to sell or build on their property. So, the rule of thumb we use for those is to say, you know, so you subtract 25%, what we call a market reduction, those are for the people who aren't going to sell, and then another 25% for critical areas, such as the creek that runs through there. So this area might actually even have a little bit more than 25%. But just using those basic numbers, the area has, based on the proposed zoning, has potential for about 75 units after those 25% reductions. And at 2.59 persons per residential unit, which is the average for a single-family home in Cedar Woolley in 2010 at least, it's about 190 residents. So, those are numbers that our city facilities can handle. The sewer system, we did a study to make sure that we could handle the capacity and study what the needed infrastructure would look like as far as extending sewer mains. And then, of course, there's a fire station right there, so the fire should be able to handle it pretty well. And we've got a pretty good police department down there too, so they said that they can handle it. To put that in perspective, so I was talking about, after the market reductions, about 75 units. South Mountain View Estates, south, which is, you know, if you go up Fruitdale Road and go onto Portobello, on the south side of the street is 96 units. That whole area is about 280 total units. So, could be considerably smaller than that area, as far as number of units that would be capable to be developed there. So, if you have any questions, you know, over 60% of the people that own property, 60% of the owners of the value of the property there, signed a petition wishing to come into the city. And so, staff recommends that the city council pass a resolution, sending this to the Boundary Review Board.
Any questions for John?
I move that we move forward with Resolution 1015-
1015-19.
Yeah, to annex this area.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Councilwoman Dunley, and if Councilman Owen has the motion. To make a motion to pass Resolution 1015-19 to approve proceeding with the annexation of the properties as shown on the annexation map, Exhibit B, to the resolution, and to forward required materials to the Boundary Review Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Madam Mayor? I would like to, due to the time, I'd like to make a motion that we table the remaining agenda items for our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, you kind of jumped the gun there on me. I was just going to put that out there to see what you wanted to do. So, I'm going to put it before the board then. There was a motion by Councilwoman Couch to table the remaining items, which is the new business. And it is seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. All in favor?
No.
Aye.
Okay, wait a minute, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Let's do a show of hands. Okay, so all in favor? Is one, two, three, four, five, okay. And opposed, okay. And opposed is DeYoung and Dunley? All right, so with no objection then, I will adjourn us for the evening.